Warm Springs. They became a formal member in 2018. And we have five appointed members, three of which are appointed by you, one by Crook, one by Jefferson, and we have a fully loaded board right now, which is really wonderful. The next slide is really just a graphic to show that we like to think of ourselves as a wee bit of a Swiss Army knife. We do a little bit of everything. Our role is a council of governments, is to be what the region needs. And so there are councils of governments all across the United States, and really no two councils of governments look the same, nor should they. They are meant to fill gaps and needs within a region or within a community, and to be working on things that cities or counties want to do together, don't want to do together, or maybe shouldn't do alone. So it's an opportunity for them to think differently about the needs for themselves and for their own unique situation. And so we really are at the service of our members, which is the cities and counties and the tribes. We have five core service areas, and this is where it gets into the distinct uniqueness of our council of governments. And the first one we'll just dive right into, and that's our Adult Employment and Training Program. And this program is in partnership with the state of Oregon. And our role is not necessarily the unemployment benefits, which we heard a lot about, especially during the pandemic, but really our role is to assist individuals that are getting back into the workforce, individuals that maybe need to be re-skilled and trained, maybe they want to learn something new. So our role is to assist with computer skills training, resume building, interviewing, coaching, really anything that gets that individual upright and able to get back into the workforce, or to really celebrate their talents and help them in growing their career goals. We also have an on-the-job training program, which may be of interest to the commissioners as well. And so that program is working with individuals who maybe need a little bit of extra assistance. And we match them up with employers, and then also we cover up to 50% of their wages. And so it helps an employee who maybe needs a little assistance, helps with an employer who maybe is just making sure that they have the right match for that individual. And then obviously, there's the incentive of the 50% training wages. And then, as you know, we are the organization that steps in for rapid response if we end up with a large-scale layoff, or with the unfortunate closing of a business. We go in and work to try to retrain and reemploy those individuals before that transition happens. And we've had some great success with that over the years. Some new areas in which we are diving into is, we have individuals, roughly about 30 individuals, that are re-entering the communities out of Deer Ridge every month. And those individuals without a paycheck and an idea of kind of what they're going to do. The recidivism rates, of course, as you might imagine, would be a little bit higher. And so we have started a program with East Cascades Works at Deer Ridge, helping to get individuals before they re-enter the community, matched up with employers, help them with skills training. We help them with life skills. Some of the questions are things like, I've been incarcerated for 15 years, and I don't really know how to use a cellphone. I've been incarcerated for 15 years, and I don't know how I meet people. How do I, you know, so just those social interactions and some of those day-to-day things. And then also during the pandemic, this team is the team that really sort of shifted into being able to reach out to businesses to identify what the immediate impacts of, or the early impacts, rather, of the pandemic were. And so they reached out to over 800 businesses in the tri-county area early on in the pandemic, so that we could share that information with our state and federal partners, of what that impact financially was for them. And then we also have a new partnership that I'm sure that you are aware of as well, but maybe not sure, maybe not aware that COIC is a partner in this too, but we are partners with the District Attorney's Office with their Emerging Adult Program. And so that's 18- to 24-year-old individuals who are re-entering, who maybe have had an infraction as a juvenile, and they are needing some extra mentoring and support. And so our partnership there alongside the county partners is to assist with the GED or post-secondary education, and make sure that they can complete that education side, and then any training to help them meet their goals with their career choices, and to help them get going. The last one that I will share in this particular category is, we are partners with Facebook and Fortis, which is a local construction company, with their Hard Hat in Hand program. And that is working with COCC and Facebook, and it's an apprenticeship program. It's a four-week program, assisting with employment in the areas of steam fitting, HVAC systems, plumbing, carpentry, electrician, really all the apprentice programs to really support our trades, and in particular, to support the great work that's happening at Facebook. Next slide, please. The next program that we'll touch upon is the Youth Employment Education and Training Program. And so we operate high schools, alternative education high schools, out of Crook, or I'm sorry, Prineville, Redmond, Lapine, and Bend. And we assist 16- to 24-year-olds that would be those students that would fall through the cracks, really. Individuals that may be 20-years-old and have not completed their diploma or their GED. We really don't have programs for them, but we know without that completion, that really could hamper their success in the future. And so we do a lot of individualized education with them. We try to also match them up if they're a good candidate for our youth training program, which assists with soft skills, some mentoring, what does it mean to have a job, what does it mean to keep a job, what does it mean to, you know, work hard, and also match that up with their education. And so that's where we partner with the Forest Service. We've partnered with Shroud Unlimited. We've done some landscaping at Highland RV Park out in the Lapine area. We've partnered with Webfoot Painting to be able to really match up youths who maybe feel like they've been left behind with their education needs, and then also the ability to get some mentorship, and for some of them, most importantly, a paycheck. And so we are able to also make sure that they can provide for themselves or their families, while also hopefully completing their education. Last year, although a lighter year for us, given the pandemic, we were able to serve 397 students, and those are students that are referred to us. We are a referral service. We do not go out and actively try to seek students. And so we're in partnership with all of the school districts. And out of that, a number of students came to us for credit recovery, and then they will go back to their own high school. But we were able to assist 115 of those students to receive their GED, and 103 of them to achieve their diploma. The last thing about this particular program is that we recently, 2019, which feels like 10 years ago, we partnered with the Oregon Youth Challenge Program, and we now provide their teachers to support the Oregon Youth Challenge Cadet Program too. So the next slide, I believe, is you. Scott?
Yes, so Community and Economic Development. We do, right now, for instance, we maybe have 30, 35 different projects, so I won't go through all of those, but we break them down into essentially three different kinds of functions. Regional coordination and collaboration, regional planning, and then project development and technical assistance. Under the coordination and collaboration, an example would be the Central Oregon Area Commission on Transportation that we provide staff support to, and provides a venue for all the, and Commissioner Dare here is our chair, but a venue for all the local governments to learn more about state and federal funding for transportation priorities, and also to, to the extent we can proactively communicate Central Oregon's needs up that chain. Another example is something I'm going to talk about in a couple of slides, called a Regional Housing Council, so I'll come back to that. Regional planning, a couple recent activities there include the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Plan that we're just finalizing right now. And that is related to something we do every five years called the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It's not the same thing, but it essentially outlines the region's priorities for economic recovery, the pieces that still need work, as well as preparation for whatever the next shock is going to be. The SEDS, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is a bit broader, and we'll be rolling into that next year. And in both of those cases, the idea really is to identify priorities and needs that are shared by many organizations in the region to help them get funding, to help increase the chances that those efforts will get funding. The last category, project development and technical assistance, includes a lot of work that we do, not, some of it actually is in Bend, but a lot of it tends to focus on smaller communities that don't necessarily have all the staff they need to take on things. Or sometimes we're actually asked, there's plenty of staff capacity, but they need a neutral party to set the table for a project. So an example there would be actually helping the county here with the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, getting that completed about six months faster than anyone's ever done it, because there was a need to get it done quickly for some funding. Another example here in the county is the Sisters' Vision Process, where we provided staff and funding, et cetera, to help make that happen, as well as the implementation pieces that are still going on. So that is the kind of big picture of my department. We also, this slide in the past would have just said loans on it, but with COVID and all these state and federal and local funding programs, we've stepped in and been providing a lot of support to make small business and nonprofit grants, as you all know, particularly, well, we did a lot in 2020 and 2021, and over $7 million there to 950 small businesses, as well as nonprofits. But then we also operate, and so those are just grants, kind of more one-off programs, as you know as well, we're about to manage another one on behalf of Deschutes County. The loan department, we used to be a separate department at COIC, but it's now in our department here at CED. And we basically make small business loans using federally-backed funds, or federal funds in some cases, to help make loans to businesses that have, like, good ownership, good business plan, and strong revenue projections, but for some reason or another, they're not really quite ripe, maybe haven't been in business long enough, for commercial bank loans, you know, traditional bank loans. A lot of the loans we make end up being second to a bank, so a bank's willing to lend up to $500,000, for instance, and they ask us to make the last $200,000, and we'll come in secondary position. We're in a position that we can take more risks than banks. Obviously, we don't take risky loans, I just mean more risk. And the overarching purpose of that program is to get those businesses out of our program. So they'll be five, maybe sometimes 10-year loans, with the idea that they're graduating on. Now they've demonstrated what they need to, they've built the wealth, et cetera, to be able to be eligible for commercial bank loans. And so we've done a total of 174 loans in the region, with more than 18 million, which has leveraged 45 million. And we currently have about, I'm going to say around $5 million in that fund, that's available for small business lending. And we have a lot in the pipeline right now for that program. And I believe it goes back to Tammy.
Yes. And so our largest department is Cascades East Transit, and that's our transportation services for the region. And so we operate a fully-loaded transit system. We are the largest transit provider in the state of Oregon that is also not a transit district. What does that mean for us? It means that we do not have a tax base that would provide a general fund. So we operate entirely off, sorry, grants and contracts. And that has made us really lean and mean over the years. And it's built a very braided system that is one that has an exceptional foundation. And now with the STIF funding that you are well aware of coming from the state, certainly helps us to be able to now enhance those services. So we operate a fully-loaded call and dispatch center out of the Redmond Call Center out on Antler. We provide the fix route services in Bend, and there will soon be a deviated fix route service, which will happen in Redmond. And as you know, the Bend services are contracted with a new contractor, MTM Services out of Missouri. That's a woman-owned business that really prides themselves in customer service and client satisfaction, which is something that we really want to be embracing. And they also operate the dial-a-ride services that are in the Bend area, too. The remainder of the services that are serving the community connectors and everywhere outside of Bend, those are CET and COIC employees. We have a new service that is beginning Warm Springs to Government Camp, helping with employment and keeping the resort going. And so for this community, we also provide the Mount Bachelor shuttles. That's in partnership with Mount Bachelor. We also provide Ride the River services, Lava Butte, and we are in ongoing discussions with Smith Rock to see if they're, with the Forest Service, to see if there's maybe something there that we could be doing to support them. And there's the new shopper shuttle, which will happen. We have one in Sisters right now, but there will be a new one from Crooked River Ranch to Terribon and Redmond. They are super excited about that. And a number of other enhancements that I will share just in a moment with the specific city projects. So next slide is Deschutes County Projects. We mentioned the Emerging Adult Program with the District Attorney's Office. We mentioned the Small Business Grant Program. Scott mentioned, of course, the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. One of the things that we have found is a service that we can provide is emergency support. And so when Deschutes County is needed, we need a vehicle to be able to move individuals out of a certain area. Came up with the evacuees that were in the community of Redmond that were housed at the hotel, but had no way to get to the supermarket, or pharmacy, or really anywhere to get their needs met. So we set up a shuttle pretty quickly. We can do that on a Sunday afternoon. And so we try to be nimble to meet the needs and stand ready to provide service where needed. The next slide is just a brief overview of some of the projects that are happening in the Bend community. And so we have a couple of new routes that are starting in spring of '22. We also have installed a number of new bus stops with benches. I know that that's been a point of contention for many of not having benches. It isn't a standard that you would have a bench at every, at every bus stop.
Lawn care works at about every other one, right?
Yes. I want to frame one of those white plastic chairs at some points, but right now, we still may need to use them. And so we also have added a new ADA bus stop. We have a number of individuals that have limited mobility, and being able to use our service is really critical. So enhancements there. We are facilitating the Mirapon Fish Passage Advisory Committee. Maybe you've heard about the dredging conversations a time or two. We are also facilitating Collective Impact Bend, which is a partnership between the Library District, the Park District, the City of Bend, and the School District. And they talk about issues of mutual concern. It's an opportunity for them to really tee up things for their commissions and councils. We have a new drone certification course and program that is within our Bend School, and that is getting those students actual FAA pilot's license for drones, which is a pretty cool skill. And then we are in ongoing discussions about lessening the impact at Hawthorne Station, being able to see what we can do. We're moving into, from a hub-and-spoke model, where everything comes and goes from that Hawthorne Station, to mobility hubs, which I'm sure that you've heard about. It doesn't happen overnight, but that is the direction. And you will also start to see our transit services become smaller vehicles and a bit more nimble, more responsive to community needs.
I'm interested in learning about that FAA pilot's license, just the concept around that a little bit. So if somebody can help with that, just to learn offline, it's fine.
Yeah, you bet.
And the interesting idea is, you know, what does it mean to have a drone in airspace? And is this going to be, you know, sharing the airspace with, you know, private pilots and commercial aircraft? Or, you know, what's the current status of that, I guess, is what I'm interested in?
Sure, it is something they need to be keenly aware of, and part of the certification process. And there are so many new applications for drones. And so for individuals who maybe feel like they are not a good fit for, it's just not their life's desire to go to a two-year or four-year college, this really is an incredible skill to be able to be of service to the community and have a great career. So happy to get you more information.
Like playing a video game for a career?
Sure, exactly. It's a real-life video game, yes. So the next slide outlines a few of the projects that are happening in the Lapine area. We are, we have a number of students, the Lapine Program for our education program is probably one of the most robust that we have. We have the new Route 31. Want to thank Commissioner Dare, who's been a real champion for that, too, and so making sure that that's been able to stay. We have the transit station that, of course, is in the engineering phase in the Lapine community, so lots going on there. We worked at the City of Lapine also to adjust the boundaries for the dial-a-ride, and we may need to do that again in the future. I think the commissioners had heard a few things about that, too. So Commissioner Bone, we were able to make some adjustments there. We're keeping that on the side to just make sure if there are other adjustments we need to make, we're ready. We are also working with ODOT on a new multi-use path that's linking Bend, the High Desert Museum, and Lavalands. So that's of particular interest, too. And then for Sisters, we are, as Scott mentioned, we are facilitating the Sisters Country Vision Implementation Plan. We have the Sisters shopper shuttle that we mentioned. We are able to get a couple of van pools put together with Black Butte, which, not entirely easy during a pandemic, but if done right, you can be safe and also carpool and reduce costs, and help with some of that workforce piece there, too. And then we were able to add a couple of new ADA bus stops in the Sisters area, too.
Tammy, I have a question?
Yes.
Thank you so much for the Lapine to Sun River. I know that's been really needed, and the fact that it got, the ridership was doubled is outstanding. I'm just wondering, do we have a Sun River to Bend bus route? Because I remember James Lewis talking about that. Has that happened?
So it has not. Thank you, Commissioner. We did do a survey, so we went to the job fairs and tried to find out. We needed to know, we had tried that in the past, and it didn't have the ridership that would support it. And it's the difference between, we think our employees, or we want to attract employees, would use it, and the difference being, will they actually use it? So at the job fair, we did a survey, and it didn't appear that we had enough interest to make that work. Another compounding piece is the variation of the timing of the positions, needing to have, you know, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning to so late. I think it's ripe for additional conversation, but it wasn't ripe for us to start. And so we have been working with James Lewis and working with the resort there to make sure that we are doing what we can. We do think it's going to be a wee bit of a leap of faith, our first out-of-the-gate, but we anticipate that being something that we would start up this next spring into summer. It just wasn't something that we could start, I believe it was June of last year, that they were looking for us to start it. And we just didn't have the interest outside of, more of a hope.
Okay, all right. Well, it's good that we're still talking about it.
Absolutely, yes. And it will likely show up on an STIF project. We did have some reserves that we would have been able to invest in that, and so we were ready. We will still be ready this upcoming spring. And I'm not opposed to doing a bit of a leap of faith and see, you know, field a dream, see if they will take that. The convenience, I think, for individuals, especially in the cost associated with having a vehicle and et cetera, my hope is that it can actually be something that we can make as successful as Route 31.
And don't forget leap year, if you're talking about leap of faith.
Good, okay, yes.
But we don't want to wait till you're sure to do it.
No, we certainly don't.
Route 31, please evaluate going up and down Day Road between Lapine and Sun River in Huntington instead of the highway.
Okay.
That, people could walk. There could be a whole bunch of ridership there that's just maybe missed out by not going up and down Day Road. So I'm sure it's been looked at, but please look at it again, because if there's a way to do that, that's where the route can really take off, which means a stop or two on Day Road.
Yes. Happy to. And I don't know the specifics. I believe that has been looked into.
Yeah.
So let me, I can get back to you on that as well.
Andrea heard me ask a few times.
Yes. She's the keeper of those.
Yeah, no, keep asking. But I just think that'd be the magic, though. You know, it's like there's one or two or three people that are getting on there for their shift, and then there's other random riders back and forth. But if it's up and down Day Road, all of a sudden, you can start filling that bus.
Yes.
So that's, that may be something to really lean into.
Yes. Thank you for that. And speaking of filling buses, we can do that a little bit easier than we had been able to in the last 18 months. You know, we obviously are bound by FDA requirements that, the social distancing and et cetera, but I think we certainly have capacity, and we don't want to be running where we don't have, you know, the vehicles at the capacity that they can be at. So thank you for that. And as mentioned, in Redmond, we will have the deviated service that'll be beginning in spring of '22, and some more ADA stops that are added. Oh, I'm sorry, I went back to Redmond. Okay. I'm finished with Sisters. Let's go to region-wide. Scott?
Yeah, just a few regional scale projects affecting all three counties in Central Oregon and the tribes, as appropriate. Already mentioned the Economic Recovery Plan. That's, like I said, almost done. Worked, we did that, by the way, with everyone you can think of that would care about this kind of thing. EDCO, Regional Solutions, Chambers of Commerce, local government folks, bunch of nonprofits. And so we have kind of eight high-priority strategies in that. Small business support grants, already mentioned those. The Core Three is the newly renamed RESTCC that we've had meetings with the three of you about, and I think will be again before too long. Regional Emergency Coordination and Training Center, so that's building more and more momentum every day as we speak of housing a facility in Redmond to meet our emergency coordination needs, as well as our public safety training needs. The Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative is a partnership that COIC, and from a staffing end, it's a partnership between COIC and the Deschutes River Conservancy. We provide the facilitation. They provide all the technical assistance and technical data, and a lot of the knowledge around options to meeting the needs for agriculture, growing communities, and the river itself. And it's about 42 or three organizations have signed on to participate in this. It's local nonprofits, local governments, irrigation districts, environmental groups, counties, state agencies, federal agencies are all participating around this table to build a plan to meet the needs for those three lugs of the stool. And what most folks agree on is it's possible. We can figure it out. It's just how, when, by whom, with what resources, what's first, second, and third on the list. Then there's some tough policy slash regulatory pieces that need to be resolved as well. But it's not an impossible task. It just, I think maybe for some people feels like that at some times. But we're making, getting some momentum. We're starting the plan build now. The next one, the Broadband Needs Assessments and Action Plan. So we've just been supporting these at a variety of scales. We actually helped the Black Butte School District do one recently, and requested funding, and were awarded it from the Deschutes County BOCC here, using ARPA funds to do a Deschutes County Broadband Needs Assessment and Action Plan. And the idea behind these is to understand the needs really well, to understand the opportunities to meet those needs. So what are the projects that bubble up, so that we can be ready for this tidal wave of state and federal, particularly federal funding that's coming to support broadband projects nationwide. And what we've seen again, and again, and again, is if you're not ready, can't point to a plan and say, this is our priority project, you don't get your share of the funding. And it goes to the larger urban centers that have a lot more capacity to be ready. Our goal is not only to do this for Deschutes County, but to take the outcomes of the Jefferson County Broadband Needs Assessment. I don't know if anything's going to happen in Crook at this point in time. I've got a couple feelers out there to see where they're at on that. Ideally, we weave all these assessments together and take a regional view, because some of these needs and some of the opportunities are actually going to be regional in nature. So for instance, trunk capacity coming in and out of the region, opportunities to partner with entity, region-scale entities like OSU Cascades, or medical services, or COCC, or whoever, those are regional partners, and they actually have good, in most cases, really good broadband. You can node off those places. So I'm not committing them to anything right now. I'm just saying there's a regional dimension to this work as well. So we'll be doing it in Deschutes, and we're hoping to kind of do a region-wide look as well. The last one on this list is...
One moment, about the broadband. So, you know, this came up a while ago, and it's obviously a big effort since COVID and people working from home. So I had called the broadband office and talked at the state level, and they said EDCO was involved and had the broadband plan, which I think they said, well, we don't quite have one that's up to date. So that's how we got here to the broadband planning at COIC. So I mean, there's a couple steps in there. But my ask is, is that if we find a few projects, so I think of it as a geographic area, you know, we do have capacity, we do have competing private interests, you know, service providers out there. And there's just some areas that are geographically noted. So I think in our planning commission, we had one person say, oh yeah, I live out in Tumalo, and I can't get good internet at all. And it's, you know, it's like between two places that have a lot of speed. And my request is, is that if there's any specific projects like that geographically for the residential areas that pop up, that we just name them early, you know, go ahead and name them early, so we can start leaning into it. Let's not wait till the end of a published plan to say, oh yeah, three years ago, we determined that, you know, downtown, whatever, just north of Tumalo, or whatever it was, needed internet. And then we said, but we're waiting for the plan. That would be bad, is all.
Understood, thank you. And I'll note that the very first step is to map out those weak spots.
Yeah, so as I say, when that's published, it gives people something to go for. Because this is, you know, there's private providers out there, fiber optic, the phone companies, the wireless people, that, you know, they're going to want to start moving on this, because they're all $100 a month customers, or whatever the number is. And if they just have the focus, or even a little incentive, it could probably make some of that happen.
Well, and I think there's really good opportunity to take some of this federal money to help with public-private partnership, to shorten the return on investment for the private sector, to be able to extend services faster than they would have otherwise.
Yep. I'm just saying, let's not wait for the end of a published document.
Understood, thank you for that.
Great.
Sort of related question. I mean, we, at the beginning of the American Rescue Plan, process of identifying projects and making allocations, we did hear from a couple of communities that, you know, had something that they had been working on for a little while. And I, I'm just wondering what the, what the process of integration or coordination is going to look like with those efforts? is going to look like with those efforts.
Yeah, so the, actually, I should have said, the very first thing we're doing is building our team, our broadband action team. And so, for instance, um, uh, you know, turns out James Lewis is on our board, he, he was involved in some of those conversations on behalf of Sun River, so I met with him a couple times, and then we met with his, um, his committee down there, working on the same issues. We now have one of their main people agreeing to join the countywide team, so that we make sure we're in very tight communication and coordination, and, and really, I think, really critically, to Commissioner Bone's point is, and not slowing them down. But supporting them, lifting them up, elevating their needs, instead of slowing them down and saying, "No, no, we need to wait for the final plan," it's not the goal at all here. Wherever there's a low-hanging fruit that can be grabbed, we just want to get everybody around at the table to support it. So, um, I don't, I'm not familiar with what, what the other community might have been, but...
Sisters.
Okay, oh yeah, okay. So, um, and, and so that related to some extent to the, uh, Blackbeet School District, I mean, it's not Sisters, but, but anyway, yeah, and so we're asking, for instance, um, chamber directors to, uh, they sign letters of support, we ask them to join our broadband action team as well, so that we make sure their needs are right, you know, right in the mix with, with what we're doing here. So it's mainly a communication coordination piece right now. And then it's going to be turning the corner to just supporting their projects and their needs.
Does that alleviate your concern, Commissioner? Because if we, we're also open, if there are things that we're missing, that this is, we're in the development phase.
No, that, that, that addressed my concern.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that all this, all these kind of disparate people that we're hearing from out there are, are figuring out ways to, uh, to get at, you know, what they're concerned about. And I mean, you know, one of the, one of the initial concerns that came up was, as some of these groups came forward, was, "Well, existing federal programs have these kinds of thresholds in terms of who's eligible." You know, and re- really, the, the existing programs are targeted at the, the places that have the, the absolute slowest connection speeds, upload and download speeds. So, um, yeah, yeah, I, I, I do hope that through this, you know, well, A, I hope that the federal and state programs kind of raise their thresholds up, but B, I also hope that there's, it becomes clear through this process, you know, what the pathways are for these different communities to plug in.
Agreed, thank you.
And on that point of the federal thresholds, which I think are really problematic, they're not problematic when there's no money, you know, it's very scarce money, but now that there's a lot more money, it becomes problematic. The, um, one of the USDA World Development Programs just upped those, that, that threshold to a hundred up, hundred down. I think it was five, twenty-five down and five up, or something like, maybe three, but they just upped it. So, that, that helped in one fell swoop a lot, and we're hoping to see more of that very thing.
Excellent.
The last bullet point there is just, uh, it's not really a project, it's just that we've been in a long conversation at COIC with the Homeless Leadership Coalition, just trying to figure out ways to help them, um, uh, have more capacity, take on more work, it's a variety of different ways that we could help them, um, from just lending staff support to, I don't know, anything else. We really, you know, we really see the need, they see the need to, um, uh, be able to, to achieve their mission better. And so we're really keen on their region-scale entity, and we are too, so it seems to make sense to be having those conversations, and we don't know where it's going, uh, just yet, but, um, it, there's something will happen, I'm sure.
So we have, when it comes to homeless, um, coordination amongst all of us, it really, I think we still need to work on what's the vision and the mission, you know, because we're not getting real clear about that. Uh, we want to help people in need, we want to welcome people to our economy, and we're offering, you know, it's a shame right now our housing costs are so high. Hopefully, this is the narrowest path, though, there's a lot of housing coming online and Ben, you know, land coming online, apartments coming online, but, I mean, what's the vision and mission? Because we can stay busy for the rest of the time on this. And, you know, we're not going to solve homelessness, but we're going to, uh, build for zero and really do some great outreach, uh, so, but really getting clear on this is, is what I ask, is, is a partner in this.
Makes a lot of sense, thank you.
And Chair de Bone, if I may, one of the, um, requirements for the Homeless Leadership Coalition to be the continuum of care is to create that regional strategy. And so, without the type of support that they need to fulfill those obligations, while also being the continuum, while also doing the point-in-time count, while also needing to be the partner, uh, with the HMIS system, which is the database and, uh, system, they don't have staff to be able to do that, and so we see that as a gap. And so trying to figure out a way that we can help support those efforts, so that there isn't duplication, and I think it'll help to wrangle in, if you will, some of that, there's a whole lot of activity that is going on, and, and we are not at a shortage of individuals and, and programs and, um, and partners who want to lean in on this space and really try to help. It does feel, though, that there isn't a, a place of, of bringing that together collectively. And so, that would be our hope, is to support them in being what it is that the region is asking them to be, in a way that doesn't, uh, increase costs or duplicate services.
I just had a conversation a minute ago with Lizzie Atwood, who works for ALC, and she was calling me about, um, the bill that Representative Crop is working on, the pilot project, allocating five, um, centers throughout the state. Um, I believe it's a million dollars for two years to run those, um, those homeless coordinating centers. So, a couple staff and what they can do, anyway. Uh, so it sounds like something is perhaps in the works from the state.
Yes, and Commissioner, thank you for noting that. That is another piece to being able to make sure that there's, um, that's a, more of a state-directed, um, the Homeless Leadership Coalition has a federal designation by HUD in order to be able to receive funds that come into the state. And so that is a good connection and alignment that would, um, be really helpful to have. So, um, they would be a, a strong partner in that, too.
These last couple slides actually relate to a, a related effort, which is this Regional Housing Council concept, and we are planning to pilot it here in Central Oregon. We've been, um, uh, and why, by pilot, what I mean is, in terms of, uh, our local commitment to it, it's a pilot, but also working with the state. And the way you might think about this entity is something like an area commission on transportation, but on housing. And so it's not, it does, it would include, um, houselessness, but it's also more full spectrum into housing provision in Central Oregon. The idea is to provide a space for regional decision-makers to discuss local housing issues, share best practices, share frustrations, uh, problems solved together, and where appropriate to create a regional one voice on housing issues. We've seen, um, a lo- a good amount of attention to housing coming out of Salem and, um, the power centers in Oregon, and there's been some great things that have happened, there's been some things that maybe don't work as well here. There's also, uh, a few weeks ago, we saw a published list of all these amazing housing-related projects that HUD had invested in, and there wasn't anything east of the Cascades, um, which, uh, not to say total HUD investments, these were competitive, um, grant-type investments, but there wasn't anything over here. So it's something, there's, there's a need to kind of elevate the issue, it seems, uh, and get a little more attention on our region. We also think this could be a great space to have partners work together on issues, just, uh, as Chair de Bone was mentioning, in terms of, okay, what is our shared mission and vision on, on, for instance, homelessness? And we already had a group that Commissioner Henderson used to participate in, I believe Commissioner Chang may have come to one, I don't remember if anybody else has come, and I apologize if I've forgotten, but it's called Housing For All, and this was a multi-stakeholder group, or is, it still exists, um, of, uh, service providers, developers, local governments, et cetera, working on, on housing needs in the region, and created the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and sort of an action plan that came out of that. But it didn't have that sort of table of decision-makers. Um, so when it comes down to the end of it, it's sort of hard for them to activate work together. So, and in conversation within that group, as well as other folks, um, that are leaders on housing issues, um, such as Housing Works or Neighbor Impact, it, this, this notion of a regional housing council came out, where we'd have a table with, again, elected officials and key staffs working together on alignment, on best practices, on, um, learning from each other, and informing the state of what our needs are here in Central Oregon. And that group is going to sort of self-direct what they want to take on, how often do they want to meet, you know, how many issues they want to take on at a time. Want to note a couple things, um, we have, like I said, we're, we're hoping to pilot this with the state, and we've had conversations with both senior leadership, on director level of OHCS, as well as DLCD, as well as their advisory councils, so the Housing Stability Council. Now, I guess, well, we have still a member of the LCDC in the room, unless, you know, you still a member, okay. So, we need to have more conversations there. But, um, it's been very positive so far, that they're interested in this model, and we need them to not just be interested, but, but essentially, you know, give us a role, uh, explain to us how they're going to take in the input that we give, um, from the housing council. So it is not going to be a compulsory body, no one's going to be required to attend it, it's not going to be a regulatory body telling anybody locally what to do, it is meant to be a value-add body that helps, uh, everyone work better on their, their shared needs around housing and homelessness. We're also not going to do it as a filter, so if there's a funding proposal that comes through, you will not need to get this entity's blessing for it to be funded, that's not the, the idea here. So just so you know about that. We are asking all the local governments to consider designating a member of, of, of the commission, in this case, to serve on the Regional Housing Council. Like I said, I think it'll be, um, most likely something like quarterly meetings, unless the group wants to do more often than that, with possibly more often meetings, um, like the, kind of the staff and, and stakeholder level, which would serve as advisory to the decision-making group. And, um, and we'd be happy to, uh, well, would, would plan on sitting down and talking over what your interests are, your needs, um, et cetera, before we launch this thing next calendar year. By the way, it's being funded by the Central Oregon Health Council, this, uh, this pilot, so that's how we're able to do it.
I'm trying to understand what, what's going on here, as in, a person wants housing, a person has resources for housing, or they don't, they work a job, or they don't, there's a housing available, or it isn't. So what, what is a housing council going to do? I mean, I'm thinking back to the UGB of Ben, and Commissioner Chang and I kind of debate this once in a while, but, you know, it's, the state's so proud of this statewide land use system, and the two thousand eight ask from the city of Ben, it got bounced back, took millions of dollars in ten years to expand the city of Ben, and now we're paying for it, because we have more people that want to be here, and we haven't built out our city. So is Regional Housing Councils going to say, "We have people that don't have somewhere to live, therefore..." What?
An example could be, if that's taking that issue, an example could be making some proactive recommendations on changes to the land use system, and to help make it more successful in providing housing, housing for Oregonians. So that's just, I mean, that's, that's a pretty high bar.
So then you take a position that you could build up or out, which gets political. So I, I'm just trying to digest, okay, well, go get her, but do what exactly here? You know, that's, I'm trying to struggle with that.
Sure, so if we take the example of the Oregon Housing and Community Services and the Housing Stability Council, so they allocate funds across the state of Oregon, and instead of, and I, I suspect that you, as Commissioner, receive a number of requests for letters of support for this project or that one, or, and so this allows you as a region to really lean in on those projects and be able to say, "We have a significant need, we have a regional housing needs assessment that outlines," which is part of OHCS for us as a region, to know what our needs are, we then, as a region, would be able to coalesce our voice and be able to say, "No, these, this, these are the investments that we need, these are our number-one priorities." And not unlike, um, what's been able to happen around Highway Ninety-seven and, um, being able to have investments there on the transportation side. But it also makes sure that a community like Prinville, which, uh, when you're looking at, uh, transportation needs, and you're looking at funding, they also might have a small project like switching out fuel tanks out at the airport, which, you know, is maybe, you know, eight hundred thousand versus eight million, and it gets lost in the conversation. But around the table of COACT, it allows for a deeper understanding of what the unique needs are with the communities in the tri-county area, but also then can elevate as one voice, making sure that we are receiving what we would consider to be our equitable, um, share of funding and investments in the region to meet the exact needs that you're talking about.
So these are housing for people in need, not market-rate housing? And I guess I'm trying to understand the domain.
Sure, it could be workforce housing, could be, um...
Full spectrum.
Yeah, you bet, could be working with Sun River on some of their, they were, when they were talking about wanting to create apartments, or, um, you know, it, it really, it, and it's the table that you are at, so you get to decide what the meaningful conversation is. We just are helping to, we've heard a need of, of creating that space to come together to have that conversation, and you might decide that it, it doesn't make sense. But we did hear from those that are trying to draw funds into the region, from Housing Works and from Neighbor Impact, that they really would like to have an opportunity as a region to sit with their policymakers and say, "These are the things that we're struggling with."
But that helps, too, I mean, so drawing funds into the region and how to best utilize funds. You know, I'm just, is a different domain, maybe, than, you know, a vibrant, I mean, I'm not trying to talk something down here, but a vibrant business community, somebody making a profit, getting a paycheck, being able to pay for their housing, and, you know, be part of the community. So this is referring to some other funds, possibly payroll taxes coming back through the state or federal dollars, and how to deploy them to help people get, I don't know, stabilized or housing. Because we don't have a healthy market with entry-level housing. Uh, yeah, and we could debate this all day.
I, I don't think it needs to be a debate, I mean, I think we can talk about all of the above. I mean, you and I often debate about, you know, about land supply and land use versus other factors being constraints on affordable housing, and it's not either or. It's, you know, like, well, my argument is always just, it's not just land supply, it's, you know, money for infrastructure and a whole bunch of other things, too. So, I, I mean, I, I think what I'm hearing is that you're setting a table where people can talk about everything that holds us back from having enough housing, and, you know, enough affordable and workforce housing, housing in particular, and work together on those things, and so I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to, um, uh, I, I don't, I don't think we need, we need to try to pigeonhole it.
You know, an example could be, um, we have a labor shortage, and it affects housing, too. Um, there, you know, so workforce development is, it's just, I just threw that out there because there's just so many dimensions.
Everything's changing right now.
Yeah.
The economy, people working from home, everything is just evolving, home delivery, high-speed internet, uh, very different world than it was just a few years ago.
And, and some communities are innovating really, in Central Oregon, really aggressively right now, in ways to actually support the market end, through infrastructure, urban renewal, things like that, um, different kinds of incentives for developers. So it, we are, we are intentionally not keeping it just on the subsidized side, but what are all the different levers that can be pulled to support housing broadly? That's the idea.
Just, um, if you look at the single-family residents that were billed in two thousand and five and two thousand and six, the numbers, we're not there at all, even though, you know, we have a robust build in Deschutes County, we definitely aren't back to the numbers from two thousand and five and six. So it is, uh, value, yes, it's above it, but numbers, no. So there is, you know, there is a shortage on all levels.
So, I'm just, Regional Housing Council, who's, who's putting that together? So we're COIC, we're all partners here, but where's this coming from?
From us. So we saw the need, um, in talking with, uh, David Brandt, Scott Cooper, hearing from partners, being able to find a space to, um, replicate what could be, um, similar to the area commissions on transportation, and, uh, candidly, experience from being seated at the Oregon Stability, Housing Stability Council, um, what are the projects' needs when in, or the region's needs when you have four or five projects that the county has all supported, which one really is the one, um, knowing that not all can get, um, the funding? So it's really a, a way for you to support your, uh, partners around the region, and have your partners around the region support you, and the region as a whole, in being able to draw in more funds and offer clarity of what the needs are in the region. And so it, it's not, it, it's really something that we are bringing to you as value, um, but if you don't see value, then that's really important for us to, to hear. We have had conversations...
I'm just trying to talk it out a little bit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, you don't have to make a decision today. We have had a number of conversations with the regional administrators, and, uh, in seeing a way to sort of coalesce the region's voice in this space.
Administrators of...
Uh, so, uh, prior, uh, Tom Anderson, and, and to some degree, um, Mr. LeLac, and um, city managers all across the region, and the county administrators, so.
Great.
And I believe that is our last.
Yeah, I think our last slide is, ta-da!
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Are the buses all ready for winter?
Getting there, yes.
Yeah. Here we go, it's coming, huh?
Yes, and we may start to see our services become more on demand, and that is a, a And we may start to see our services become more on-demand, and that is a direct response to the workforce shortage that we are experiencing along with everyone else. We're working closely with the school district to see if maybe there's a way we can share drivers, share routes, but we just are really all experiencing workforce issues. So, it could mean that we start to move to vehicles that don't require a CDL, which means, you know, could be more truly on-demand type services. So, more to come there, but we're trying to get as creative as possible to continue to meet the need.
Isn't that called Uber?
Well, yes. In some areas, we'll, of course, come up with a different name, but...
Lyft.
Yes.
There you go. It's an option.
I did want to ask about, you mentioned the fact that this is one of the largest public transit systems that's not a, that doesn't have a transit district, and is that, are there still, is there still analysis and work going on that points towards, you know, when the right time to become a district is and, you know, putting those ideas before the voters or before, you know, critical decision-making bodies?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Excellent question. So, as you'll recall, in 2017, I believe, it had been before the legislature a number of times prior, COIC does have the ability to now tax, if you will, so we were afforded that. Usually, council of governments is not in that space, but due to the uniqueness of our service array. But we do that in concert with the city or county, which is wanting to actually make that ask of their own constituency. So, for us, right now in our contract with the city of Bend, within the next two years, we are to provide to them a plan of what some options might be for them to be able to go out to the electorate and ask, "Would you like to support advanced, or enhance services in the Bend community?" I think it's going to generate a broader conversation of, should it be just Bend? And if it is just Bend, then what does that mean in terms of maybe some phased enhancements into the other communities over time? But I think that Bend is going to be the first that's going to step up and say, "We would like to look into this." So, we will be bringing a consultant on board and looking through those options. What does it mean for the COIC board as the current structure? I'm not sure. What does it mean for enhanced services and how we make sure that, you know, those dollars stay in the Bend community? Not entirely sure. So, a lot of questions to be answered, but I think it's a, you know, our job is to make sure that we have the organization that is ready and capable of fulfilling those obligations, which we know would be relatively new for us and, you know, obviously an expansion for us, too. So, that is on the horizon within the next two years by contract.
Great, thank you.
Yes. And the city of Bend determines what that rate is, and they determine what they want for expanded services. And so, really, we are a partner and a, we are the vehicle, if you will, no pun intended, but that we would be alongside them, not out front, and it really is led by the city.
So, the city council you're referring to?
Yes, correct.
So, there wouldn't have to be a voter ballot measure within the city of Bend, or?
There certainly would, Commissioner, yes, but they would determine what it is that they want in terms of service. We would assist them in determining what enhancements they want, and we would identify what we believe those costs associated would be. But it is the city that would determine the timing and the rate and how they, we really are sort of the sponsor there versus the lead in letting them know what it is that they would want to be doing. And then, yes, it's the voters that ultimately decide whether they think that's a great idea or not.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to acknowledge that the other night, we did approve two loans...
Yes.
...through the loan department, which I thought, you know, was an excellent first step. Apparently, it took longer to get going than what Patrick had thought. But I was wondering, is there anything additional that, Tammy, you can add to the community about Hawthorne Station? I know it's had a lot of upgrading, a lot of thought have been put into it. Is there anything more that the community might be interested in?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. So, yes, excited that we're getting our loan program going again with the free money that, as I call it, zero-interest money that's been in the community. It's, our products haven't been that competitive, and so now they are a little better, so you'll be seeing more and more. For Hawthorne Station, as you might know, and certainly as our board member, we are, you know, right now in the design phase of moving a lot of that impact off Hawthorne and Fourth Street onto our own property. We own just over an acre that is in that vicinity around Hawthorne Station, and so we're going to be moving sidewalks and curbs in, and so our buses are not in the road, needing to park alongside the, and actually passengers have to cross Fourth Street to get onto the buses. That's going to help with the actual impact on that road infrastructure, but ultimately, the mobility hubs that we will be building is also going to lessen that impact because all of the transfers won't be happening at that location. Ultimately, I'm not entirely sure what a facility and an acre in the central area district would be worth. And so, we are looking at all ideas of, is that the general location that we stay in long-term in general? And so, an acre in that area could be redeveloped into something maybe at a higher, better use than what we might be, especially because we're moving into the mobility hub type of environment, too. So, a lot more to come on that. Obviously, we have commitments that are with the Oregon Transportation Commission and ODOT in terms of the funding for the building, but for right now, we're making the, trying to lessen the impact through pavement improvements, and so we don't see that necessarily as a sunk cost or a lost cost, if you will. If we sell that building and do something else in the future, we have been able to identify that we would be developing 11 additional parking spaces, which are important if you hope to redevelop, too. So, I hope that answers your question, and those are some of the immediate things that we're working on.
Oh, great. No, I appreciate that.
You bet.
I just, you know, moving it in is probably really good for the relationship with the community.
Absolutely. And, you know, they've been really complimentary. The other piece is the customer service and making sure that we're not blocking alleyways and roadways and et cetera. So, sometimes it's just making sure that we're clear on what that behavior looks like, too.
And smaller buses surely will help, too.
We will no longer be seeing the really large buses. Those days are really, they're just, they're just gone. They are making smaller vehicles that hold the same capacity and our street network and just, things are not built for that size of a vehicle. So, yes, you are correct.
So, the big low-floor buses you're referring to?
So, the big low-floor buses are as large as we will ever be.
Yeah.
Those will be phased out as they fulfill their useful life, yes.
Yeah. Couple of million miles, and then we'll send them on their way.
Well, hopefully a little less than that.
Oh, okay. Great. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, and thank you very much for the partnership. It's been really great, and thank you for the gift of time today. So, great to see you all.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you, Hannah.
Okay, second item today, and we do have executive sessions following this, but item number two, Veterans Behavioral Health Peer Support Specialist. This is the, I think, Barrett Flesch, referring to the grant application request. Hello?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. I am here because we are requesting to apply for a Veterans Behavioral Health Grant. It is a renewal grant for a position we already have. It's with the OHA. It is to provide peer services to veterans in our community, behavioral health peer services. We currently fund the position for one veteran peer support specialist who focuses specifically on providing support services to veterans in need in our community. And we've had that as part of OHA's pilot project since 2018. It's been very successful, and they have just initiated a second round of funding for that, and we want to jump on board to be able to continue the successful services that we have had.
Great. So, is this the same FTE, or is it adding capacity?
Same FTE. It just, it continues the funding to pay for the FTE, and it additionally adds, has a 10% admin cost that they pay for as well, which is included in the budget and some supervisory oversight of the Veterans Peer Support Specialists.
Great, thank you.
Barrett, how does this, how does this person interact with, like, our county Veteran Services offices and, you know, other places where people can get mental health services, like the Vet Center or the VA Hospital?
Great question. They interact a lot. So, part of their major function, of their role, is to outreach and engagement, and that's not just directly with veterans that they get referred to, but it's also with community agencies. So, our following community partners are the Veterans Administration, Central Oregon's Veterans Outreach, the Bend Vet Center, some with the local Band of Brothers, the local organization, Central Oregon Veterans Ranch, we are very involved with, and also we interface with the Community College in OSU.
So, okay, I'm glad that you're all connected and working together, but like, in terms of the flow of, like, where does someone come into services, where, you know, where does this position fit? And, you know, are you referring people out to other places or kind of, I'm just trying to picture kind of what this, what this person, what this position or this program is doing within that network?
So, this works with people who are open or in need of behavioral health services. So, there may be an identified need in the community. It may be from our homeless outreach folks who go, "Hey, I've identified a veteran out in the community who needs behavioral health services," and that's where our peer would go out to engage. We may hear from the VA, who they may not have services, behavioral health services for sometimes. Sometimes they're backed up, and we would take them on and we would bring them in. So, this peer works with a case manager, with a behavioral health supervisor, and with a behavioral health therapist to provide linkages and a wraparound support to the veteran around behavioral health services and any other services they might need. So, if they need food, if they need electricity, how to access resources, the peer is really designed to be somebody with lived behavioral health experience who comes alongside. They are not a case manager, they are not a therapist, they are a peer who is really coming alongside to provide support and help them navigate these different systems.
Got it. Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, you may have said some of that already, but like, I was not 100% able to visualize what role, what role that this position played in that network. But like, now I'm hearing that, you know, this is, this is a piece of capacity in like, in a network of, you know, service provision that, where, you know, a whole lot of organizations are working together.
And it is really to provide support and linkages where that veteran may not know how to access those, and a veteran with lived experience can, you know, first of all, support them in their mental health struggles and also help them to navigate that system and know that they're not alone. And we've found that when we have peers who aren't veterans or other people who go out to do outreach with veterans, that many veterans aren't comfortable working with them, and when they're most comfortable is if they're working directly with a veteran who has lived experience. And that's really why OHA put this grant out, and that's really the success of it, is veteran to veteran.
Great.
Barrett, thank you so much for presenting this today. I think it's really important. I know our veterans' village is going to officially open, hopefully on Friday, homes, a place for 15 people, but I know we have like at least 100 homeless veterans in Deschutes County. So, the more work we can do at this moment in time, I think it's really critical. I had heard that the, you know, a lot of them are feeling a bit lost at this moment, and truly, I'm glad that this is a peer, someone that they can trust and relate to, and keeping the program going is great. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And there's really no shortage of need, that's for certain.
Truly, there is no shortage. So, thank you. And just to thank the veterans who have served our country, as Veterans Day is on November 11th, so, this Thursday.
Thursday, yep. Thank you.
We hear in other parts of the Behavioral Health Division about the challenges of, you know, how valuable peer support specialists are, but the challenges of being able to recruit and retain them because of, you know, you know, basically their peer support experience or their peer experience is not valued in the same way that like academic training is or certain kinds of credentials or licenses. Is that an issue for this peer support specialist position, or at least in this area, is, you know, it works out?
You know, no. I would say what's unique about this is that it's military culture, and because the veterans in the military culture, we have a lot of, you know, I talked about the wraparound services, the behavioral therapist and the case manager. We also take STAR Provider Trainings, which is military culture training, so that we learn more about military culture within behavioral health. And this person is integrated within our team, and it's multidisciplinary team between those different providers, and so they're really accepted quite well, and it's a unique niche, if you will, for peer-delivered services. That said, in writing this grant and getting it prepared for submission, you know, since 2018, we have served over 400 people with peer-delivered services and over 24,000 services. So, they are expanding services, and what we find is that, you know, our clients really identify, again, much like the veteran, why veteran, un-veteran is a better door or window into the services. That is true of peer-delivered services as initial contact. The engagement seems to be retained, and I think most teams are very supportive of peers, which I think is your question, and I think that is always a challenge initially. It's a fairly new role, only since 2011 where they even identified as a role, and, you know, giving them equity in pay and equity in understanding life experience as an equitable resource to many people who have maybe college degrees or things like that, their life experience really has some equity in the relationship with the client.
Great, thank you.
Can I, do you have a, can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Yes, to move approval of the Veterans Behavioral Health Peer Support Specialist Program Grant of $133,743.50.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing no Commissioner, seeing no other discussion, Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair vote yes. Okay, go get her.
We will.
Thank you.
We'll go after it. Thank you so much for your time.
Oh, thank you.
So, at this time, other items? It's a Monday afternoon, what we do since last Wednesday, anything?
We do have the COIC meeting, which we briefly referred to, and it ends up that our chair, Bart Brick, is actually moving to the coast, and so our vice chair, Anthony Brodmann, will be taking over for the December meeting, so. And we had an electric vehicle presentation, and the presentation had a bit of, what is the word?
Sparks?
Well, it did. It was a little bit incoherent moments, but it was an excellent presentation. I saw it on the news, and I'm hoping everybody could see that, so.
No, I didn't see that. I was able to go to just a local company in Redmond, Smith Brothers Push Rods. So, that's just a company, it was a connection through our Ready Board, and I was able to meet with the owner and talk about their business. So, it was just great to get out and see, see a business in action last Thursday.
Yeah. On Thursday evening, the Bulletin and the City Club of Central Oregon held a kind of roundtable discussion, following up on a city club forum that had focused on youth homelessness and, you know, how challenging it is to complete your education and get your, and graduate and achieve educational attainment if you're homeless. And so, this roundtable discussion just started to delve into, you know, how, in all these discussions about homelessness, how do we specifically hold and focus on and make some progress on solutions to support, you know, families with school-aged kids who are homeless and unaccompanied youth who are trying to complete their schooling? And I think that that roundtable is going to go, I didn't realize it at the time, but they actually want to meet for a couple of months and try to bring a little bit of focus to that.
Great.
I actually went to the Rimrock Treatment Facility in Redmond in a beautiful, beautiful historic house. historic house on Seventh Street, and the really wonderful news is that they will be opening their teenage treatment center, they're going to be opening it back up in January, they do believe they are going to have a staff that is committed to that possibility, and the executive director of Rimrock did explain to me that she felt we really do have a lot of drugs that are being used in our community and something that she wants parents to be aware of, so there's a lot going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also have a thank you letter and a receipt for the donation for the Vietnam War Memorial Fund, so this is from the nonprofit itself that we had donated $10,000 on behalf of the citizens of Deschutes County, and they have a nice brochure talking about the project, and another donation envelope if somebody's interested.
That's what they got to do.
I know.
Donate once and then you get.
But I'll give that to Nick, and Nick can file it somewhere or whatever, but that's a real nice, you know, receipt for the donation. Is there anything else? Any other items? Seeing none, we do have an executive.